All right, we'll go ahead and call the board meeting to order. And first thing we need to do is say the pledge and get that going.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored on this day of this flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas. One state under God, one individual.
Okay, so as usual, we do have a spot for public comments, but I don't think we have any, any public comments. Think we're good with that. So the main reason that we had this meeting today was really to work through some of the business that we have to do. And so we have a resolution that I know was passed out to you guys online. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at it. We're moving pretty fast. But I think the plan is for us to kind of go down that list of resolutions and answer any question that you have. And I think we're going to have time at the end for any random questions that, Beau, you have that you can answer for us. So with that, Beau?
Yes, well, thank you. I appreciate everybody being able to make it here. Emergency meeting and certainly with this COVID-19 pandemic certainly justifies an emergency meeting of the board. And in order for us to continue our operations and ensure that we're able to pay staff and do the things that we need to do over the course of this closure of our campuses, we'd like to present this resolution to the board and have discussion over it and go through any issues that you may see or think of that we could add to this or things that you may not want in here that we can take out so that we have a formulated plan moving forward with board support. Again, the first thing we had intended to talk about at this meeting yesterday was considering closing of schools for an extended period of time. Appreciate the flexibility that the board was able to show as we dealt with the events that unfolded rapidly yesterday, in particular with Region Four, the entire Houston school districts, including Saffir and Fort Bend and HISD making their announcement that they were going to go ahead and close through April the 10th. I've started to say 6th. April the 10th was classes to resume March 13th and to build in at April the 6th. That's an important date for us as a board. You know, we'll reevaluate if we needed further closures. In light of them closing, that also prompted the Montgomery County School Districts to all decide that we would do this in a unified manner. And so appreciate your time yesterday to get that announcement out. We've made that. Again, schools will be closed through Friday, April 10th, starting back with kids Monday, April the 13th. And the 6th will be a day that we can review the existing data and determine if we need to be out longer. So that would be the first thing that we wanted to discuss and look at today, but we've already put a check in that box. So next up, we'll just kind of walk through the resolution. As you know, the resolution is based on disaster declarations by both the US government as well as State of Texas and Montgomery County have all declared states of disaster related to the COVID-19 pandemic. And so, of course, this board and the school district has a substantial public interest to protect the health and safety of students. And so we're doing these actions like closing schools, the first one. And then other things that we want to consider is how do you continue to support your employees during this time? And so we're seeking the board to approve resolution to allow us to communicate that we will pay our employees during this time that we are off for the pandemic. And so that two reasons. One, you know, you retain your staff so that they are here when we come back to school and they're ready to go. And two, you don't, in this pandemic, the health officials do not want people out there worrying about their jobs or benefits or out looking for other employment. They would like people to be quarantined, or if you will, or stay in a, in, out of harms way. And so those are compelling reasons for the board to consider going ahead and paying staff even if they are not physically reporting to work during this time. So any questions on that? This resolution would just be to ensure, you know, and to quell or calm any fears on our staff's part, that the board's taking action to approve resolution to make sure you get paid. Now, we'll be revisiting this. Obviously, we have another meeting. If we don't have another emergency meeting between now and April, there'll be opportunities for the board to modify this or extend it. But this is basically so we can ensure that they're comfortable in knowing the payroll will be processed, they will be paid on April 15th, the next pay cycle.
Dr. Reese, in that policy, or I know we're passing a resolution, what would be the exception to that? Because if we were in a situation, because I would, I would just assume, and I think everybody, I'm not going to speak for everybody, that's, wouldn't even be something that had to be passed, that we were going to pay them either way. So I'm just curious, is that just to ensure that? Is there a policy that states under certain emergency conditions, we will not pay our teachers?
There's no policy that states that we would not pay, but in the past, when we've had to be out for extended periods, like for Hurricane Harvey or an ice storm, the board has always had to approve a resolution that says we will pay if we didn't have to make up those days, which like in Harvey, the state waived five days. And so instead of us saying, we're going to go make everybody go those five days, we're, we approved a resolution and paid them for those five days.
So that's in case we do or do not have to make it up?
Correct. And at this point, what we're being told by the state is that if you provide opportunities for online or at, at-home instruction, which could either be online or paper and pencil, if you provide those opportunities while you're closed, that you will be allowed to apply for a waiver from the state to not have to make up those days that you missed for minutes of instruction purposes. So at this point, you know, that is the intent of the administration is to work with staff and to ensure that we are putting out curriculum and putting out work for kiddos to be able to do over the break so that we could apply for the waiver and not have to make up those days that were missed.
So I did have one other question about that. For this resolution that we're passing on continuing to pay teachers and staff, does that apply, who all does that apply to? Do we have people that are kind of like on an hourly basis that we're paying? What is that like the, I think of like the bus drivers and, and all those folks. What does that look like for them?
Yes, sir. For all employees that are currently on the payroll, which would include your bus drivers, your paraprofessionals, your police officers, your maintenance, everyone that's currently on the payroll would receive their normal monthly rate of pay, whether or not they were able to come in and physically work all 40 hours or not. And the district has the intent of, as we move to online instruction, that, you know, our teaching staff and our, everybody's going to be working, they're going to be working from home. And in certain groups, it's, you know, we'll have to have teachers to come up to school. Obviously, we'll have to go through a process to make sure that they, one, haven't been in contact, that they are not, you know, currently ill or have been around anyone who's ill, those type of things. We also would have to meet all the requirements of the county. We couldn't bring up all 100-plus staff members at the same time because you can only have gatherings of 50 or less. But an example would be to have fourth grade teachers collaborate with their team and we could see if we can make that happen online, virtual collaboration, or through conference call, or video conferencing. And in some instances, there may be a need where we have, you know, a small group that needs to get together so that they might be able to make copies of the worksheets, so to speak. I'm not, not just worksheets, but whatever material so that the children that don't have internet access at home or could not do the curriculum online would still be able to get that. And we would have option of curbside, you know, parents come pick it up, or we could mail it home if we needed to mail it home. And again, that would be some cost, additional cost that would be related to our current instruction as far as, you know, the mailing price or whatever that would be. But we are being told that if we keep meticulous records for that type of information, the Texas Education Agency's communicated that there would be opportunities to be reimbursed for some of those costs. Again, there's an opportunity to be reimbursed. I didn't hear a promise, but that certainly keep meticulous records of those type of things and you'd be able to submit them. Yes, sir.
Jim touched on the hourly piece. I want to make sure that was covered. But the, the study from home, how would that, will you hold somebody responsible for not submitting their, their packet of paperwork? I mean, it seems like you have some kids that are going to be all over it, you're going to have other ones who are not. Can't really hold them to the same standard in this situation if they don't show up to school even, I wouldn't think.
Correct. We have been told by the Texas Education Agency that those decisions will be able to be made locally, that, and those include decisions about grading, about course content, what's turned in, of also leading to other things that if we were out an extended period, like we don't come back, then in that case, you know, we would be looking at having to make decisions about promotion of students, about graduation requirements potentially needing to be waived, some of those things. And so to your point, we are very aware that not everyone is going to be able to be at the same pace and/or able to turn in work and do those things online. So we'll work with parents on a case-by-case basis for those kiddos that can't, to see what we can do to ensure they demonstrate enough mastery of the curriculum to be in a position to be promoted or go to the next grade level.
So you're saying that someone could get held back because of online work they didn't perform?
No, I don't envision us having a system that was set up that way, but I'm currently, under board policies and state guidelines, if we did not come back to school at all, then we'll have to come up internally as a district with some rubric to determine, we just cut it off on March 13th and say, you know, we're, we're not going to teach that curriculum, or what does that look like? But we don't have any intent of not helping students to try to go to the next grade level or saying, hey, you didn't do your online work, or you didn't do X or Y, so you can't be promoted. We will come up with some, some form or fashion to work with that. We have kids, whether they're in school, you know, or not at school, that don't always turn in their homework or do the assignments. So we'll handle it the same way. And if there's an outstanding exception, you know, and that exception could be that they or their family has contracted the virus and they were sick and they weren't able to do the work, or whether it was online or, you know, pen and paper. So we'll make all types of exceptions for that type of thing. And we would just work with the family to ensure that we're able to, to give them what they need to progress. And we would steal possibilities of summer school, you know, that maybe that could be an option for, for kids who have not been successful up to this point already, that maybe they needed this second, this last six weeks to bring their grade up to a 70. And now we've changed all this, you know, and they're, they're struggling already. We would, we would make exception and work with that child to ensure they can get whatever it is that we determine locally is needed in order to promote or go to the next grade level. We're going to do everything we can in the best interest of kids always. I think that's all we can do in this situation.
Yeah.
And the same thing with our employees. Yes, sir.
I just want to say thank you for all you've done lately. I know it's been rough run here lately for you and the staff that are normally over here. So thank you. I told you several times, I think you've communicated really well with the community on that, so thank you. On item two.
Yes.
It's an extension of Mr. Dossie's question. Authority to make decisions for exempt employees. Can you explain what exempt employees means and, and how that relates to maybe hourly or, or et cetera, stuff like that? We're just covering everybody is what you're saying.
Yes, that's what we're saying. Of course, your exempt or non-exempt relates to overtime or not, no overtime. So our 40-hour or hourly employees will just be paid a 40-hour work week wage. You know, if we have to call in certain groups of employees to work, an example would be the police department, so that we have at least someone checking on our buildings. You know, one, we're going to scale down, obviously. We don't need the entire staff. But if we scale down to where we have one person who's checking buildings or making sure buildings are secure, or if the food service delivery truck shows up and we're closed for the day, that there's a contact in the district that they can be, you know, those employees will be compensated as well. And so there's different ways that you can, can look at that, you know, of how you pay them.
Great, I'm glad we're hearing, we're covering everybody.
Yes, the only thing at this point that I don't have a clear idea about is a substitute teacher. So if we, you know, we have 150 substitutes, but obviously they're not able to work because we're not in session. And so with them, it would be most likely looking at ways and we'd have to check with legal and TASBE and some of the HR requirements about if you have a long-term substitute. So they have committed for maybe a six-week stint to do a pregnancy, you know, if somebody's out or something. I think those people would be under, they would qualify and be paid. But if you were just a, you know, filled in two or three times a week and you're not able to do so, I don't not, I do not believe that they would be part of this or able to be paid under that. It's a, if the opportunity's there and you choose to take it, you get to work. Well, now the opportunity's not there. And so the biggest thing there that I can foresee, and again, this is just looking into a crystal ball, nobody knows. But let's say we do come back April 13th, and at that time, we still have, we have staff members that have contracted the coronavirus and they're not able to come to work. And then we need a substitute. So, you know, what does that substitute pool look like if we're out of work three to four weeks and they're not able to, they have to go find another job or something? So that, those are all things, I think, you know, that are, everybody in the state's trying to work through right now of what that looks like. But just wanted you to be aware that that may be the only category of quote-unquote employee that would not be covered under this authorization. And again, this is just for one payroll. This is to get us to April 15th. And at that point, we'll make a decision if you want to extend that, or we need to modify that, or there's other options that we can look at. And we'll be working with other school districts, other organizations to see what kind of other practices that they're using that we might want to modify and use as well.
And this is a question for the board, too. I know we're saying one payroll. I mean, is there any downside in just saying, you know, what, whatever happens to the end of this school year, we're maintaining? Is there any downside to that?
Yeah, I was going to ask something very similar to that. I don't know at what point internal financials get rerun, obviously understanding that the bulk of the school's income is from property taxes, that's already been received and is ongoing. But extended closures, when do we rerun the numbers as to impact on budgets and revenues from cafeteria, food sales, things of that nature, and how that impacts the budget that we've already approved and then moving forward to next year as well?
Yes, the Texas Education Agency has told school districts that they are, your funding, you're going to be held harmless if you, your, your level of funding will not be impacted by this pandemic, meaning that your local revenues will be what they are. Of course, we're, most of our revenues local because of the property wealth situation. But the state aid that comes through will be at the same level as what your summary of finance at mid-year was, which says basically, you know, at the 9,000 student mark and about a 96% attendance rate. So we feel like that will be through the end of this year. And then if there's adjustments that, you know, moving forward, if for some reason this spills over into August, or, you know, nobody's predicting that, but they'll make adjustments then. But we've been told that funding is not going to be an issue.
You brought something up also on the, the paper and pencil delivery versus online for those who can't have online. And then you also brought something up in reference to gathering, bringing people in, you know, pay overtime, that kind of thing. So that begs the question of regulations set forth yesterday and today by County Judge Kyo and then also President Trump on the amount of people that can gather in a certain place. Are we looking at, you know, certain employees at certain times, scheduling that out to hand out those, if somebody has to, you know, come by the schools to pick up those packets and/or instruction for the teachers to where, okay, we're going to allow 10 teachers at a time to come in and be instructed by the principal at the local campuses, that kind of thing?
Yes, we will definitely abide by all the county and national rules about group gatherings in public facilities. And so whatever that number is, we'll stay under it. And there will be, in order for us to do online or, you know, make at-home instruction a reality, we've got to have our teachers involved and they'll have to come up. If, and again, there'll be a vetting process we'll have to go through, they're going to have to sign an attestation that they haven't been around anyone who's had the virus, that they're not sick. I don't know that we're going to have to take their temp or anything to get them in the building, but we'll have to do some things of that nature to ensure, you know, that we've tried to control the spread of the virus. But we would need to get in small groups, teachers that maybe at elementary, it's a little easier, maybe at a grade level, you know, and schedule times so that they can come in so that we don't go over whatever the limit is. At the secondary level, it may be a little more difficult because of the number of employees at the high school versus elementary. And then also so much more diversity in course offerings and, you know, how that looks. It's not a, here's the fourth grade team, how are we going to come up with maybe one online curriculum for this week for all the subject areas? And we all do the same thing. You know, you're going to have AP courses, dual credit courses, career tech courses, and they all have different requirements. And so we've already been in contact with Lone Star College to try to work through what that looks like for kids that are taking those courses and some of that. But definitely would comply with all requirements and hopefully any requirement for small groups or to bring teachers up to work will only be right here initially as we try to get going so that we have the opportunity to provide everyone's training and professional development they can do online as to how they can collaborate online, what, what programs that we're going to, to pay for to allow that to happen or to use. Some of them are free resources, but I, all of that still has to be worked out.
I just, yeah, because I was figuring with, we want to be able to give them access at some point within the rules because suddenly as this happened, you know, that's, a lot of these teachers, that's their second home, is their classrooms, there's things there they need access to. I think there's animals still probably on campus and things that need to be taken care of, so.
Yes, there, there's a lot of moving parts. That's definitely.
Dr. Reese, what is, is there any talk about graduation requirements being waived from the state?
That came up in the conference call with the commissioner yesterday. And what their initial direction to districts was that they were going to, I wrote it down, but it was ultimate flexibility will be given to school districts on graduation requirements, promotion and retention requirements, and what that looks like. They are making up, having to make a lot of decisions on the fly. And so they don't really know what that looks like, but they know that it's a hot potato. And so I think they're saying, we're going to let local school boards and schools decide what that looks like. And so as we progress through this, we'll be bringing the board a plan on, you know, what does that look like? And we'll be working with other school districts for best practices and, and, you know, what that looks, looks like.
I just have two more questions, Mr., and it gets back to Mr. Dossie's question about extension and whatnot. What does number four mean? Authority to continue food services?
Yes, that's, I'm glad you asked that. We do not currently participate as a school district in the summer feeding program for kids, which is a, all through the Texas Department of Agriculture. It's a federal reimbursement program. And since we do not, we are asking the board to allow us to file applications and begin the process to get approved to do that so that we can then use that umbrella to offer meals to our students who qualify for free and reduced lunches during this time that we're out. And that's the process. We could do it locally and you could say, go do it and we'll, we're going to spend our money and do it. Or we can join the program and we'll be reimbursed from the federal government for the meals that we provide to kids. And it does, I've seen a couple of different things that have come out just yesterday and really last night that broaden the scope of that program substantially to allow you to feed more children than, than just folks that qualify based on that. So this would just give us the chance to, to go ahead and file the application, get the ball rolling as opposed to have the need to have another board meeting to do that.
Would that stop at the end of this situation or would that continue on in perpetuity?
It would, we would have the opportunity to continue on if we chose to. Right now, the, what that would look like, the only time that would be in the case would be in the summer. And you would have the option to say whether or not you wanted to do a summer program or not. And we have about 25% of our children that do come from homes of poverty and qualify for a free or reduced lunch. And so we've been able to work with the county food bank and different things over the years. And we have a lot of super volunteers at churches and different groups that already do summer feeding and backpack programs for the weekends and for extended things like spring break. So we have not had a summer feeding program. But this would allow us to do it if we chose to. But the main thing, this allows us to feed now if we're out for three, these three weeks or, you know, who knows for the next month, two months.
So based on that program and us applying for approval, how, what does, what does a timeframe look like for approval? And in that timeframe, what, do we have any idea, I know this is very preliminary, would we have any idea what that would cost us in the meantime before we were approved?
To the cost.
Since you've had two days to, since you've had two days to.
I read it last night, but anyway, yeah. I would, in regards to costs, you know, we would front the, front the expense in the, that would just be ordering, you know, supplies and food supplies, and then paying for the people to, to be there because if we're paying every, here's a consideration on the pay. If you're already paying everyone, whether they're here or not, and you have certain groups of employees that are required to come in, are you going to pay them at the same rate or are you going to pay them more? And is, you know, so, but anyway, that's something to consider on the cost. We don't know the exact rules on that at this point, but it would be something we could bring back to the board and say, you know, is there a premium? We do have examples of that when we've been out for things like Harvey. And we've had law enforcement that was working overtime and hours and they were paid in addition to.
Like a hazard type pay?
Yes. So there might be some costs associated with that, with this program. The meals, the cost to buy the, the foodstuffs will all be reimbursed to the district. And, and so that we know for sure.
And even if so.
And then the technique, the, the rules as they're written would require us to hold it at a campus that has a, a larger percentage of children that utilize the program already. And so we're looking at doing it at Lincoln. And we already have that drive that we can open up and it's kind of a curbside. We're not going to open up the cafeteria. It'll all be prepackaged, curbside, come pick it up and take it home. And Lena, our food services, said that that facility would have the capacity if, for whatever reason, we ended up with a prolonged amount of time. if, for whatever reason, we ended up with a prolonged amount of time. Let's say through June, and we ended up with more and more students that needed the service. We could still do all of it out of there.
With our funding being consistent already, right? I mean, our budget's not changing. We're already funded for this, so it really doesn't set us back anyway because we're going to, we have that in our budget already for lunches.
We do, and we have run a good surplus in the food service area. So I don't think cost will be an issue for the district at all.
In light of that, I would like to ask Mr. Dossie if, once the dust and the disinfecting spray settles, maybe we could ask Ms. Nugivire and her staff if there's a way we could extend some sort of service or project to our communities? And if that's something that surrounding other districts do. I'm not saying I'm advocating for it now, but I'd at least like to ask the question, if we don't mind.
Yes, sir. And we've had a phone conversation about that and what that would entail to be able to expand it to any of our students that have a need. And the only difference would be that, you know, if we pay for it and offer it, or are we going to charge a $2 lunch to a kid to come pick it up? You know, that's just some internal decisions that we can make and we'll bring some information back to you on that.
And you mentioned the backpack program that we know goes on the weekend back. Is that continuing at this point with?
Yes, sir, it is. And when we made the announcement Wednesday that we were going to close, our counseling staff, who, they're amazing, I'm sure you all know that, but they went to work immediately on trying to ensure that they had foodstuffs. And, you know, there were already a program set up for kiddos that are in need of food to have additional food supplied over spring break. But they knew, you know, now we were adding two days to that. So they've repackaged, added a little bit more to it. And we typically work with the different churches and some organizations that do that. And there's been no discussions of it ending, so.
Goodness to them.
Yeah, I would think, and this is me personally, I think we should do it whether we get the funding or not.
And I agree with you. That's the direction that I've given to the Food Service Department at this time is, let's get ready to roll and see if we can get meals started next week on Tuesday or Wednesday, whether or not we're in the program or out. But then let's file the paperwork to get in the program. And then we'll settle up when we, when the dust clears. But I know that the board, you know, would not want any of our kids to be going hungry during this. So we're moving to make sure that doesn't happen.
Bo, I don't know if I'm jumping ahead, but on number seven, I'd like some more clarification on that, on the resolution regarding temporary suspension of the Texas Public Information Act. Obviously, everyone wants to be in the know. And so I just want to know, what does that entail?
Of course, our attorneys drew up the resolution and I think they put that in there. I think the suspension is related perhaps to the number of days requirement since we're going to be out of school for a prolonged period. And our public information director would not be normally someone who has to report in when we're closed. So if they did receive an information request, the clock starts ticking. And there might be something that we could suspend, the timelines related to that. Just maybe an email that says, hey, we're closed right now. And so we're asking to be able to have an extension or something of that nature. I don't believe that there would be any provision that we could just say, no, we're not going to give you the information. Just maybe we can amend the timeline to give us more time to get it to you.
Because I agree with Dr. Fuller that I feel as though the communication has been very good for the most part this time around. And I just don't want any, I don't want to prove a resolution that would change how the district has been operating thus far.
Okay. And I don't, I do not see that, doing that.
Mr. Dawson, and I need some help from my colleagues on the board. Can someone tell me where we saw that it's a one, we're going through one payroll? I didn't see that in the resolution.
I don't know that it's explicitly stated. It was the administration's thought process would be that, you know, to get the board to approve this resolution so that we can assure the staff that they're going to be paid at the next payroll. And then we would be meeting again before we ran the May payroll. We'll meet on April 15th, which is the day, that's payday in our district. And so then if we wanted to extend it, we could. I didn't want the board to feel like you were giving carte blanche authority to the administration to just pay all these people and we end up being out three or four months. And then, you know, we're like, hey, why didn't we do X, Y, and Z? This was just for right now, but it's, that was the intent. But I believe that this does give more latitude for a longer period of time. So we could add that in there to just say that or, but we'll be bringing it back to you at the April meeting if we're going to be out past any other time.
Would it be a problem of putting like a termination date? It could be June 30th even. I mean, just something far enough in the future so that-
No, sir, I think that's a good idea.
End eternity.
Yes.
No, I agree. I wouldn't want anybody, any staff to think, to be worried about their paycheck right now.
Exactly.
You know, a month isn't long enough, you know, so I would think-
Say till June the 30th.
What about current contract? I mean, when the contracts, they're very-
Contracts would end for all employees or finish up their, this year's contract that last week in June.
June, okay.
And all new contracts to start July 1st. So, you know, those are your 12-month employees, which are only your high school principals, you know, district level administration, police maintenance, that type of thing. Teachers are on 187-day contracts, so their contract, they will have fulfilled the duties of the contract. I think it's May, it's, we get out May the 22nd, so next week, so May 29th.
So by saying June 30th, though, we would cover every employee at the end of contract?
Yes, sir. That would get everybody through, through the summer if for whatever reason they didn't come back to work.
In that case, on page two, where it starts right before number one, that sentence, "In furtherance of public purposes, the Board of Trustees makes the following designations to the superintendent and designees." I would, I would guess one thing we could say is until 30, June 30th, right after that, designees and before the colon.
I'm good with that. Rest of the board, see that?
Motion Jim or anything like that?
We'll get the motion here later. This is kind of a working session. And so, yeah, I think that's good. I mean, I, just so you know, I've had a lot of teachers contacting me just by having this, there's kind of a rumor out there, okay, now the schools are closed, we're all getting laid off, kind of thing. And I don't want that, people thinking that at all.
I don't either. That was the biggest response to yesterday's email to staff about, hey, we're going to, you know, we're closed a little longer and we'll be working with you on what that looks like. Most of my, the email responses were, are we getting paid? And what about me or what about my job, you know, category? So I do think that's number one on everyone's mind at this point. And I do believe that the board taking action on this, that we'll be able to quell some of those fears on that part, on that front. And that, that's important.
I would be in favor of calling the question and moving on this, but I want to ask one last question then, Bo.
Yes, sir.
I always seem to start with that. What's our communication plan for this and for going online? Can you walk us through how communication looks to our staff and to our parents for online?
Yes, plan was to send an update to, out to the entire district to just say the board had an emergency meeting today and they approved a resolution to pay all employees, current employees on the payroll, whatever that terminology needs to look like. So your next payroll period and through the remainder of, you know, this closure due to the pandemic or something like that, so that we get that out. Then we'll also put it out in the board briefs that we send out. We put that on Facebook and, you know, all that jazz. And then the plan for communicating internally how we're going to roll with the at-home instruction. I'm trying to, is that a new term? You know, we know a lot of educational lease, but-
Because it doesn't have to purely be online.
It doesn't have to be online, but, so it could be a lot of different things. But, yeah, home, really, I thought about that. The plan is to start with an email to all parents tonight that goes out that asks, it's asking questions in a survey format. And here's a copy of that for you guys to look at. We need to know what your home connectivity is. What type of access do you have or your children have to the internet? So that we can game plan a little bit better for what this looks like for us. And so you could see there just some generic questions. Well, you know, what's your kiddo's name? Where's the parent address? What campus, what grade level? And then on the back, more about, do you have internet access at home? What's the quality of that access? Is it dial-up? Is it, you know, can you, this doesn't say that, but can you stream videos? Can you do those types of things on your system? And then, you know, what type of device are you using? Is it, you've got a phone with a data plan? Or do you, do your parents have a desktop? Or is that an iPad that you can access? Just so we kind of know. And then how many siblings, people in the house are using? We have one iPad and five children, you know, what is, that's going to limit a lot of things. So, you know, we're not going to get drilled down to hard data with, you know, we're not, we're hoping we get 80, 90% return on this, but probably going to get 60. It's spring break and we need it yesterday. So, but we'll send that out so that with, you know, an email that explains, we're asking for this information so we can plan what instruction looks like. We do plan to offer instruction during this hiatus, both online or in, and/or in pencil, paper format. And then, so that's the first communication to parents. And we're going to communicate to them that we'll be, have, we'll roll with our instruction plan on Tuesday of next week. So that's when we're intending to have resources online in the first week of instruction, ready to roll. So with staff internally, we've started yesterday. And through, actually, principals started over the weekend. But with instructional coaches and principals and just a virtual meeting online where we were just, what are ideas? What are constraints? What are thoughts? What are the existing resources we have today that we can roll with? You know, lots of different bells and whistles and programs that are out there that we don't currently own or subscribe to. I mentioned to a couple of you, I've talked to more computer and software vendors in the last 48 hours than I have in 25-year career. Because they're calling every number and emailing because they see an opportunity, right? But for us, the first things first, what resources do we have that our teachers are already trained on, that they're comfortable using and we could put together in the next one day that they're not on break? Because really, they're not on contract right now. So you're really looking at Monday, what can we put out there? Get together Monday to put online on Tuesday or Wednesday? We're saying Tuesday internally, but we realize that might be Wednesday. So starting there, and then the first week of instruction will only be reviewed. No new concepts taught, no new materials taught. Just a review of coursework that we've already, kids have been out now for more than 10 days. So it's what we would normally do anyways, review what we've worked on before, give them a little pep talk, here we go, we've got six more weeks of school and let's go. So that's the intent. And with teachers and staff to alleviate anxiety and nervousness and just overall feeling of being overwhelmed of, hey, put everything online, it's going to be great. So we're really focusing on minimal this first week. Just get stuff on there. Let's get curriculum related to reviews and material. And let's get that out there for the public and our parents. And then we'll put together a robust training program on the heels of that, that they'll be able to do at home. So here's a refresher on how to do Google Classroom, which is something we subscribe to and you could use if you wanted to use that. Here's some different metrics, or different programs that we can use to help with online. We have the Microsoft Forms, Microsoft 360. Turn It In is a program we currently use a lot at the high school that allows kids to turn things in online. The Socrative software, which is a really online questioning platform that teachers post questions and kids can go on and answer. And there's different lessons and puzzles and tickets, different things that they can use there. Of course, Quiz It and Kahoot are different little programs that we have. And then also at the elementary level in math, we have Imagine Learning, which is a K-5 math online curriculum that all kids could access. So those are some things that we already have that teachers have been trained or had opportunity to train on. So we'll focus on that type of programming to begin with and then begin expanding that into the second week as we have more information and we've been able to push out online training that teachers can do. Because next week, they're based, they're on contract and they could, we could, hey, can you work at home online? Can you do this 30-minute online professional development to help you create an online platform for your classroom using some of these things we already have? And feel more comfortable about going that direction than just saying, hey, here's a new program. This is a new LMS for everybody and have fun. So that's kind of the plan right now and really trying to eat this elephant one bite at a time.
That's a good metaphor. I think we have some of the best teachers who are early adopters of things like Google Classroom. And they can, you can ask them to be the trainer kind of model, you know, that we could use. And I hope if they do kind of go above and beyond, maybe they can get a little, you know, recognition or something of some sort.
Most definitely. And you're right, right now, they're ready to go. And we're, hey, we want to do X, Y, and Z. And we're like, all right, let's get these parameters in place and have this meeting and kind of-
Already heard of it.
Make sure all of our expectations are the same. Because, you know, there's going to be some of that that we're going to have to work through. You know, maybe in this classroom, they're early adopters and they're doing a lot online. And your classroom across the hall is not as comfortable technology-wise. And they're doing a little bit more pen and paper. And then the comparison of, you know, why is this doing that and we're not doing this? So those are some of the things we're trying to work through to make sure we have continuity across six elementary schools and two junior highs and two high schools.
Do we have any computers that if a family in need could maybe pick one up? Are we considering something like that?
Yes, sir, we've talked about that. And we're currently kind of going back through the inventory to try to make sure that we have, first, what do we have that would be acceptable? And then what's our process for allowing those to be checked out? But we do have some laptops and different devices that we can make acceptable, available to kids to check out.
Okay, thank you.
With regards to Dr. Fuller, with Jerry leaving, is that putting us behind the eight ball in some of this rollout stuff? Do we have update on that position?
Adam Dennison, Adam, can you stand up there, wave your hand there? Adam is, was hired as the assistant director about two weeks, maybe about 10, maybe a day before Jerry left. And so I got ahold of his cell phone last night and he's been working through the night on all of this telecommuting and the things that we were working on for this meeting. And the first task I know that he's working on is to be able to open up our network for teachers to be able to virtually, I don't even know the terminology, but they need to be able to access the OneDrive or the networks where their resources are from home or remotely. And so trying to build a system that, our system currently is not set up to just give carte blanche access. And there's a lot of security concerns there because once you're in, you're in from anywhere. So that's, he looks real calm and collected, but I know that's what we're working on first. Yeah. But yes, it has put us a little behind, but he's doing a good job. And Kim Foster there, that's been working as well. So we appreciate their help.
Thank you both.
Thank you all.
Jim, I'll call a question. Motion to-
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said you had a question. I have some other questions.
Okay.
So I was waiting for you to get through yours. At this point, I know you said we have some things that we can already use. At this point, I know you said we have some things that we can already use. Do you know, are there any software or applications or resources that you know we're going to need?
There are definitely some resources we are going to need. Not really at a point where I could tell you exactly what those are in terms of calling the product name. But this is, if we're going to be out for a prolonged period of time and we're going to be required to do online learning with fidelity and hold students accountable for, you know, that type of work, we need to move to a learning management system, which is an LMS, is the acronym. And that would be, there are a number of options out there. Blackboard Connect is a big one I know at the college level. But there's other ones like Schoolology and some things that are more geared to K-12. And there are some cheaper solutions that we could put together that would help. But there's things like that that I know would make it easier to do this. And it would also standardize across the board what it, what it looks like as far as for parents or students logging in, you know, will they be able to log into one portal and it shows all their classes? Teachers would be able to put the assignments in there as it stands now. If you're in high school, you're really going to be taking direction from eight different sources because you have eight classes and, you know, have this for that class or this for that class. And so anyway, to be able to put it all under one roof would be very valuable if we're going to be doing this for an extended period of time. And then I think there's, some of the things that have come up are just discussions is, you know, access for students that don't have internet access, what does that look like? You know, that may be something we want to consider. How do we help provide that or at least open up, you know, our Wi-Fi and say, come sit in the parking lot? Or, you know, whatever. I don't know that that's a great solution, but I'm just saying some things like that. Or even the air cards or some way that they can access the internet at home if they, if they don't currently have access. And obviously, all of that begs the issue of, you know, if we provide that, we're going to require, everything goes through our firewall and everything is, you know, safe and secure that they can't access inappropriate sites and all that stuff. So there's a whole lot of that to work through on accessibility and providing that at home for kids. And then the third area that we believe we'll need resources is that our teachers are incredible and they're going to go, and they're already looking at online, talking to their colleagues in other districts. Their Pinterest are, you know, looking at different ways to do this thing. And they'll undoubtedly be coming back to their principal, instructional coaches going, hey, this program is great and it would help us do X, Y, and Z. Or here's a program that we could look at that might help us teach handwriting for kindergartners online. I'm making that up. But just those type of examples that we'll want to be able to consider providing. Once they're vetted, we know they run on our network and they're best practice and all those things. If we're in a prolonged period, more than this three weeks that we're about to be out, I think those will all be some things that we'll be needing to ask for resources for.
I kind of look at the board as our role to get the rocks out of your way when you're going down the road, you know? Is there anything else that you need from us? I know we were pretty, trying to be as extensive as we could in this resolution, but can you think of anything else that you need from us that may not be on here?
At this point, no. I think we've got, as far as operations, while we're closed, paying employees, while they're not able to come into the facilities. And, you know, your input today about the instruction and what that, you know, that plan is going to look like is what we need today. I would say that I would venture to say anyway that we'll need another meeting before we get to April 15th because things change so fast right now that we may, may want to be considering looking at a date that we could already schedule a meeting or just continue to be flexible and utilize this opportunity to have emergency meetings. But anyway, those are the, that's the only thing. I think this covers everything and from the board, just appreciate your support. And I know you're communicating and lots of people have been in your ear about things that are going on. And just, if you need anything, let me know.
Well, Dr. Reese, thank you for saying that, but we really appreciate you and what your staff has done. I mean, to turn this around and have this kind of detail within really 24 hours, y'all done, y'all done a great job.
Stay tuned, it may, we may, everything could change tomorrow, but thank you.
Extension of Jim's question, chief, is there any, I mean, you're, you're, you've got a badge and a gun. Is there anything you guys need?
Not at this time. My main communication is, we're talking to all of the other leadership that they did schedule. So we're all kind of operating the same, she, Dr. Reese kind of listened to some of the things we're doing to make sure the district is safe while our staff is away and kind of have a plan in place and that needs to kind of run things up. I don't think it's necessary right now, but we're good for that.
A couple other random questions that I had people ask me. I know we did the sanitation on all the schools. Did we also do that on the buses?
Yes, the plan is to do deep clean on the buses. And then the protocol for our drivers is currently to, you know, when they finish their route at the end of the day to go and part of the checking the bus is wiping down all the seats. And so that's been in place. But we are going to have the Cleaning Service SSC to go in and completely sanitize the buses and wipe down everything and use the wand that you saw the other night to go through the facility there as well as all the buses. And we believe that all of that will be done by this Friday because that was the original plan. And so at this point, we'll begin looking at the need to continue those services over time. And that will be an additional expenditure of resources under that contract with SSC. But throughout the pandemic, our goal and direction is to continually clean and disinfect and deep clean those buildings. Even if they did it last week, let's do it again.
Are there, I know we talked about the free lunches. Are there any other services that we provide for the community that will be impacted by this? Do you know?
I'm sure that there are, but at this point, I don't know of any one that is big of an operation as the food service would be. You know, most of the, at this point, a community, you know, things that I have gotten are like rental of facilities. We have a church that, you know, rents a school. And under our Level Three alert, all of that is canceled and they cannot be in the facilities. And so there are some things like that that will impact community groups, just, you know, on facility usage. And that's, that's the only thing that I can think of now besides how we would do food service.
Could I, could I offer a commendation to some teachers? I've already started seeing teachers jump in much like they did during Harvey. And they're doing like online read-alouds just to kind of keep kids' brains off of all the really crazy stuff going on. And I just think that's a testament to the people we hire and the people we, we have here. I mean, they're already jumping in, they're already leaning in on their break, you know?
They really are. And in fact, it's, they're, yeah, they could go today, you know, if they wanted. It's like, come on, it's spring break, get a little break and we'll, we'll give you some parameters to work with. But, yeah, they're amazing, good folks.
Tad on, there's already, I know there's been collaboration of great teachers and teaching groups already getting together, putting their plan out there and passing it along to certain principals. It's pretty impressive.
Yes. They will rally and we will do this, at-home learning will be done well in Montgomery. We have great teachers and they'll make it great.
That's all that I have. Does anybody else have any other questions?
One more quick, and you might have mentioned it, as far as the drive-through at Lincoln, that's kind of, it sounds like the direction we're going with, with the meals situation. Would that start Monday?
I don't believe it could start Monday. I think that we would, our best-case scenario is to maybe Tuesday or Wednesday of next week to be able to.
So still next week, though?
Yes, because we, with spring break.
Right.
We already had not made an order of food for this week. And so now nobody's in, you know, the cafeteria is this week. So we'll have to get people up, they'll have to get the order in and then the food would be delivered Monday. And then ensure we have a staff that can do it, yeah. And they've given some flexibility on that. And so we haven't nailed down what that looks like. But flexibility in that you may be able to do, you know, food preparation and have meals on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday and be able to give more than one hamburger for lunch or something where you're able to say, here's maybe two or three meals, you know, at a time. And that might be something we consider as well. Just depends on the number of folks that need help. And that really will drive what the program looks like. We, just depends on how many need it.
Any other questions from the board? All right, go ahead, Mrs. Fuller.
Did you have one, Adam?
I thought about it, but then I self-tabled myself.
A motion, a motion, we act as resolved and amended with the coronavirus pandemic resolution presented.
All in favor? Any votes? Okay, motion passes. And that is the end of the meeting.